Okay. Meeting will come to order. This is the Cache County Council meeting, Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Thank you for being here. And we will begin this evening with an opening from Councilman Nolan Gennell.
I'll make my comments in the form of a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, may we come before Thee this night as we give thanks for the many blessings that we have, and grateful for the moisture which we're receiving, and we pray that we may continue to do so. We're grateful for this land and the freedom that it provides us, and the order which we assemble under. We pray for those who are less fortunate, they may be blessed, and who may be sick. We pray for those who serve and sacrifice and provide this freedom and peace for us, and we pray their blessings will be upon them, in this land and in distant. We give thanks for the opportunity of serving at this time, and thus we ask and say and do in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. You'll now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nolan. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, did you all have a chance to review the minutes? Are there any changes to the minutes?
Move approval is written.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October 26th as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll now go to the report of our county executive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, an expense report passed down to you for your signature. And I have two appointments today for sheriff deputies. One is for Dallin Burt, and the other one is for Drake Falls.
Move to approve those two appointments.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Dallin Burt and Drake Falls as deputy sheriffs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I had a couple of items maybe I was going to report on, but I'll skip those into, I know we want to be a little quick today so people can get on the road, but I just wanted to point out one thing. I don't, and I don't know how long it's been since this has been available, but the Logan Ranger District is making Christmas trees available in Logan Canyon for harvests this year. They actually went available today. You can go to recreation.gov and get a Christmas tree from them for it. Twenty dollars, which is a lot better deal than what you'll find in front of a grocery store.
It's been a few years.
I think that might be the first time in better than thirty years that they've allowed it to do in Logan Canyon.
My understanding is that Senator Romney's office had talked to them about it and asked them to reconsider, and they reconsidered.
Send them a tape of Christmas Vacation, Clark Griswold. Give me more of a Christmas tree, Todd.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now move to item 7A, which is a fire district report from Rod Hammer, the Cache County Fire Chief.
Thank you. I guess in the interest of keeping things moving, we'll keep it moving. Just, I spoke with you a couple of months ago on some of the issues, so I'm just going to cover some of the things we didn't really talk about. Just as a current review of the fire and EMS system in the county, there are eleven fire departments in the county. There used to be thirteen. Richmond and North Logan have been absorbed into Smithfield and Logan City respectively. We contract with all of these fire departments for fire suppression in the unincorporated part of the county. And we also work with the Forest Service and the state on wildfire suppression. This year, we had four minor wildfires in the county, Curtis Ridge, Ant Flat Cove, and Blacksmith Fork. All of those were limited in size and scope in that they weren't multi-day. There was some air resources, which is kind of the kicker on cost, that was put into Curtis Ridge and Ant Flat. But the biggest fire was twenty-two acres, which is remarkable considering the weather we had and the conditions that we had. We did have early closures for fires, as well as some pretty stringent public service announcements. And we think that people's awareness of the situation probably helped. I looked over some past year's costs, and it appears that drought years typically have low fire costs, primarily, I think, because the fuels don't grow, they're very light fuels, and folks are just aware of it. There's so much, I mean, they can tell the conditions, so they're a lot more careful than on years that we have a lot of grain, or green up, a lot of growth, and then it turns off hot, and they are a little more careless when they're out camping. So remarkable year as far as lack of fires, and we're very happy to see it. We did withdraw the special event permit for concerts at Cherry Peak due to the drought and the fire conditions, and I still think that that was a wise decision, even though it rained, I think, on two of those concerts. So we just, you just can't tell that far ahead, and people have to have notice. So with the conditions, I think we made the right decision. And we actually recovered some fire suppression costs from last year's Three Hills Fire above Hyde Park due to some litigation that was taken care of and some recovery there. Of course, our biggest change this year was the ambulance service. There are now three ambulance services in Cache County, Smithfield, Logan, and Cache County in the south. As far as the south goes, we have ambulances in Hyrum, Mendon, and Wellsville, just as a reflection of our call volume. Last year, just operating as the fire service, we had two hundred and eight calls. This year, so far, we've had seven hundred and eighty-nine. So our call volume, of course, has increased dramatically. And typically, an ambulance, fire ambulance service, about eighty percent of the call volume will be ambulance. It's just the way it runs nationally, and we're, we're running at about the same level. In 2020, we had eight full-time employees and one part-time employee. In 2021, this year, we now have twelve full-time, twelve part-time, and eighteen paid-on-call employees for a total of forty-two. So we've gone from nine to forty-two employees. We've done, I think my, my staff has done a fabulous job staffing and training and getting people where they need to be, and the equipment and supplies and everything where it needs to be. We've had probably as good a startup as you could expect. I think we've, we've fulfilled everything that we had as far as a goal on our startup. Excuse me. It's not COVID, I've been tested. We are starting to see a little bit of a struggle with some of the paid-on calls, so the Mendon and the Wellsville ambulance, making sure that somebody's responding there. There's been a couple of shifts that we've had to take that one out of service for a period of time. We're doing good during the day in Mendon with the two full-time people we have there, but sometimes the paid-on-call volunteer folks are not able to cover those shifts, and we're watching that closely. We do a ton of training in, last year, we began teaching EMT classes. The first responders in the valley have troubles getting into the BATC, or the BTEC, EMT and AEMT classes because they open those classes up for the general populace, and a lot of the university students fill those slots. I think the last year, last year, their AEMT class was held during the day, so the volunteers couldn't take those classes in the evening. So we've decided to start offering the basic EMT and the advanced EMT classes. Those are open to all first responder units. We're teaching a basic class right now, and we have students from Lewiston, as well as departments in the south that are in that class. Just, we want to have those folks, if there's people that want to respond, we want them to get the training opportunities that they need. So we are keeping that open throughout the county. We did have some COVID problems, obviously, last year with some of our classes. The staff worked with them, setting up special days when we had a few of them out for COVID. They came in and, and worked with them to get them caught up, as well as do their state testing and get that all taken care of. We've also worked towards getting CPR instructors within our department, so we're able to offer CPR in both basic BLS and advanced life support. And we've been working with the Risk Management Committee to offer the CPR classes to the county employees, probably starting next year, we'll offer that. And our on-duty staff, so the folks that are staffing the station, responding on calls, are also training with the local volunteer units in their area. So we've, I think the relationship between the ambulance and the first responders is as tight now as it's ever been. They're, they're more than pleased with the service they're getting and the training that they're getting. We are still doing the fire classes, so our basic firefighter classes, firefighter one, two, hazmat awareness, and ops, and our basic wildland fire class are still being taught. That runs January through June. So far, for next year, it looks like we only have two or three that have signed up. We've got to work with the departments to see if they have any other folks. I think we're going to have to have a minimum of five to run that class. Just both cost and the ability to do the evolutions and the skills, we need to have at least four to do that skill, and if we don't have the folks there to fill that, it wouldn't be a good training opportunity for them. Last year, we had two thousand four hundred and thirty-two student hours in fire. This year, we had a fewer, fewer number of enrollment, fourteen hundred and thirty-two student hours. We had thirteen hundred and twenty-four EMT class hours, and this year, we had eighteen hundred and sixteen, so we went up on our EMT classes. Other training we've done, we had an active shooter exercise at Ridgeline High School, no, Rich, Green Canyon High School. We had probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred participants, both responders, staff, hospital staff, students, helicopters. We ran a full-blown exercise, and I would say it was a major success because we failed horribly. We, we learned a lot, you know, we, we exposed some areas of concern, and, and we're addressing those, and I think next time, we're going to come out a lot better. Ken Matthews and I, as well as members of the sheriff's office, went to an active shooter response conference in Nashville last week to get up to the date, the up-to-date national standards for active shooter response, and there was, there's, there's some very good things that came out of that that we'll be able to employ. Our code enforcement has been fairly consistent over the last two years. We've done a hundred and twenty-five inspections, a hundred and fifty-four zoning clearances, thirteen plan reviews, and twenty full-blown fire investigations. Our 2021 project, we moved into the Hyrum complex, of course, with the roads department. And thank you very much, that is an awesome facility. We've completed a remodel of the county station in Hyrum for the ambulance. We added the day room, an additional bedroom. We upgraded the garage doors, so they will actually open when you push the button, and you don't have to get out to open those. Put in new beds and added a storage shed. And then we've ordered the fire engine for Clarkston. We still don't have a delivery date on that yet. It'll be next year at the earliest. Our future projects for next year, we're looking at wildland mitigation on the Deer Fence above Millville at Gar Springs. There's a spring there that we're going to put a bridge over so that we can get our structure, or our wildland engines across that stream without getting bogged down and widening that out. That's in cooperation with DWR and the state, Forest Refire and State Lands, and it's, it goes into money that we are required to spend on fuels mitigation. So that's a state requirement, that we spend a certain amount there, and that's the area we're going to focus on next year. Lastly, my current worries are the same as always, staffing of the volunteer departments, staffing of our ambulance, and we're again watching that closely. Even our, our full-time ambulance, one of our positions is, is part-time employees, and at times there, we're struggling to have part-time folks cover those shifts. So, any questions? Yes?
On that amount of money you have to spend every year on, on wildland wildfire mitigation, is, how much is that? How high do you know?
It varies depending on a ten-year average of fire costs. It's been going down over the last three years, and I think we're right around forty-five thousand dollars.
So they tie it to however much you're spending to fight the actual fire, then it'll kind of come back and say, well, you're fighting a lot of fires, so we're going to increase the amount that you're spending.
Correct. Yeah. And, and part of that, part of it can be used for preparation, so twenty-five percent can be used to acquire equipment, training, that kind of thing. Fifty percent as a minimum has to be used for fuels mitigation or preparation, and, and then the other quarter goes on the side of the other. But it's, it's been a good program for us. It stabilized our budget as fires, as far as fire suppression. There's a little pushback right now in the state level because when they put this program into effect statewide, the state cost for fire suppression went up fourfold or something, just went way up. So they're starting to reevaluate that and think, maybe this isn't a good plan to have. And we haven't heard yet what their new plan is, but there's some talk that they might change that in the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I read a report the other day that talked about as we go more to electric vehicles, the batteries are being increasingly fire and causing problems as pollution and that when the wrecks and that happen. Is that anything that you're aware of, or what?
We're aware of it. We've been dealing with electric vehicles for the past fifteen years, probably. We've gone, we've done training, we've completed training on how to fight electric vehicle fires. The biggest problem is with accidents and not cutting the red wire. And there's a big orange wire that runs through those, it's the high voltage wire, and so we've learned to not touch that. With fires, it's like any other fire, we stand back, put water on it until it goes out. So they're not really anything that's more or less of a challenge, it's just a little different. We have gasoline that burns in car fires, and we have now lithium batteries, so. I can show you some great videos on that stuff.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Rod, thank you so much. Thanks for all you do for us.
Yeah, and thanks for your support, we appreciate it.
Rod, I think we were very well taken care of with the hot summer, with all that fire possibility, and then we were fortunate to get some early storms in September before, you know, all the people go to the mountains for hunting and that. So we were, I would say, we were really blessed.
Yeah, and we did, we did have that one fire in October of Blacksmith Fork Canyon when some power lines dropped, so we weren't entirely out of the danger, but had that happened two months earlier, we'd probably still be up there.
That's right. We were really concerned, and it was, it was timed there in July, that it just literally felt like it was going to combust just in the open air.
We, we didn't sleep very well for a while there.
Good luck. I mean, that was good. I know it was because of your hard work and prayers that it stayed, stayed good.
Well, we've got some good folks working on it too, so, thanks.
Thanks, Rod. Okay, next item on the agenda is a department report from Devron Anderson, our county recorder, and the council had asked for this report. Devron had a previous appointment or commitment and wasn't able to come tonight. He also wasn't going to be able to come on the 23rd, so I asked him if he would give us a written report, since I thought the council wanted to have the information as soon as possible. So that is on, in the packet on the server. He's got some graphs too, showing where they're at, as well as a letter that he's written with more detail. And did we put this in the packet, Janine, for the public packet?
I didn't. I can't.
Can you do that? So I, because he would give this report publicly, I think we should make it public. He's, just as a quick summation, because it's a lot of information, but as far as their entry work, as of October 29th, they're not behind. For their verification and ownership, as of October 29th, they're seven weeks behind, but they're catching, they're catching up because in July, they were sixteen weeks behind. Parcel changes, they are three months behind, which is an improvement from six months behind, which they have been earlier in the year. And they're not behind on subdivisions as of October 29th. So I talked with Devron, and he felt like they're making significant and good progress in what they're doing, so the council can read through that report. He hopes that maybe he can come to council in, in December, January, and, and give us more of a report. But I left this on the agenda in case there were any questions or any discussion was needed, even though he wasn't here to present anything.
I thought he did a really good job of explaining and detailing what's going on in his office and the number of shows. Shows some, some really diligent effort on the whole staff's part. One thing I did note was the concern by representatives of the title company who attended the meeting that they had, and their comment basically that, hey, we're paying for this service with the fees that we pay for this recording, and so we should get the service that we're paying for. Basically saying, use the money to get the help you need to pay for the service.
Right, and if you noticed, he's still trying to find a qualified person to be his chief deputy. He's still looking for that. They did hire some new people, and they've been working hard, and I think that's helped them to catch up as well. And it's been hard since they've had such a large turnover there. Any other questions or discussion?
I, I still have several questions that I want him to answer, and, and then I want the title companies to see these, these reports, because I know they, they're still quite disgruntled, very disgruntled. So they're still, you know, if all these things have happened, you go talk to the title companies, and it's still far from, far from what's necessary.
I still think we should have Devron come in and visit with us. I have some questions as well. I've had some people that's been really upset.
Okay, I will ask him to come again. Hopefully, this time, his schedule will be more accommodating to our schedule. So, any other questions, discussion? Okay. It's not time to do the public hearings yet, so we'll skip over that. We'll move to item 10A, which is the ordinance on the Cache County Consolidated Fee Schedule. And John, had, we had a little discussion that you were hoping we, am I correct in remembering you weren't wanting this passed? Or do we need to wait?
The last time it was brought up, and I forget if that was here, the ordinance review committee, there, there were still a few fees that needed to be inserted, I think from the clerk's office. Our office has recognized a fee that we also need to insert, so I don't believe that it's ready. Bryce has been shepherding this along, so we'll need to see if we can get access to the latest draft and see if we can finish it up.
So it's not something that, I remember there was something that you were hoping that we could discuss, or you could change?
That's the fee, that's the fee from our office, that we, we may, if we don't have this ready, whole thing, at the next meeting, we may just put in front of you a resolution for the one fee that we need.
Okay.
But there's no, no action needs to be taken tonight.
Okay. So without objection, we will put that on our next agenda. Okay, seeing that, we'll move to items under number 11, initial proposals for consideration of action. Probably want to talk about the resolution on the budget following the public hearing. So next, we'll move to 11B, Resolution 2021-26, which is a resolution authorizing our Economic Development Director, Sean Mill, and our Executive, David Zuck, to receive compensation for service on the Board of Directors of the Utah Local Governments Trust. And just to be clear, the, the trust is, is the one that would be paying them, not the county.
Yeah, we do this every year.
Yeah.
And I would waive the rules and make motion to approve Resolution 2021-26.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to waive the rules and approve Resolution 2021-26. Is there any further discussion?
How did we get a second seat on that?
Sean was already on that board when he was with Tooele County.
So he's remained on it?
So he remained in a seat when he came to work for us.
Bonus.
And Craig was on the board.
Oh, Craig was on, yeah.
Fire, and I took Craig's seat out of the eleven. So that's how we ended up with two seats.
Cool.
Good for us.
Okay. No further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and then move to item 11C. Okay, this is an idea that I had. It is the, it's a discussion regarding the creation of a committee for county building needs. As we've been looking at acquiring some more property down by the fairgrounds, a building down there, and there's been some kind of discussion or ideas out there about building another county building. And as we're growing, I thought that it would be a very good idea to have a committee, a council committee, to get department heads and other elected officials involved about what their needs are as for space. And once you get talking and you can start to work things out together, I thought we could come up with some good information to give to the council on what kind of needs we have, which would lead us to understand what kind of money we need to spend, if any. And also, any policies that we might need as we go forward, as, you know, if we need new carpet and things, does it need to match? Does it, you know, how do we go forward with that? In our, our budget, there was a proposal for a study, and it had a hundred thousand dollars to, to do this, to study what we need and make a recommendation, and I felt like we could start off with ourselves and save significant amount of money. And I would propose that we would ask Kathleen Howell to head this committee, and I talked to her, and she was agreeable. She's been here a number of years, she's, she knows a lot of how things have changed over the years and seen how the space changes took place and what the needs were. So council, if you, if you think this is a wise idea, I would, I would love to move forward with such a committee.
Would that also be a committee that would go before, such as we saw the remodel of the clerk's and the recorder's office, that they would review that before that's done?
They would. I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, we had renovation done in the clerk auditor's office, would they be helping to see if that would, in future, the same thing?
I think that would be a wise idea, and, and what parameters were involved in that. My understanding was there was, at one time, a building committee that helped oversee that building and came up with plans of consistency as to color and carpet and wood and stuff like that, to make sure that the building was cohesive, everybody, and I've never been able to find anything in writing, and would love to have a committee make suggestions that we could put that in writing, so everybody's on the same page and can have a cohesive workflow as the county and not necessarily all these separate offices.
Well, I think if they helped in something like that, because I've received a lot of flack on the cost of that, so if you had a committee that could dig into it and then back it up, gives a little more answerability for somebody who's got to answer that.
Yeah, review, have them review the.
Expansions or remodels?
Expansions, yeah. I think that'd be a great, yeah, great.
You're, you're seeing a committee for the county council members, does that mean all of us are involved, and how much time are we looking at? How many more meetings are we doing?
Oh, that's a great question. My idea is, when I say council committee, meaning that it's an offshoot of the council, kind of like the ordinance review committee is an offshoot of the council, and we would just need one, at least one representative, but not more than a quorum on that committee, so we would just need one council member to, to be on there.
You know, there, there may be some merit. My only concern is, are we starting now to micro-manage departments in the county? That's my concern.
I agree with you, Carl.
I feel, this feels like we're micromanaging as a, as a council. That, that would be my concern.
The idea was that it needs to be done, and, and we're kind of moving forward with ideas, but there's not a cohesive place where everybody's kind of talking together and, and seeing what each other's needs are, and, and what is the best ideas to move forward.
I just wonder if it wouldn't fit better under the executive, because he, he, he's really, he oversees each of the departments. I mean, not the electives necessarily. I mean, not the electives necessarily, but each of the departments responsible for the building and real estate and things like that. And, and I just feel like as a council, that's maybe a little out of our purview, what we ought to be doing because...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, if you were...
I say, I think we're right in line with us. Why I say that is that we're the ones that approve the funding that makes all these changes.
Yeah, we approve the funding.
And the thing is, though, there were some things that have all happened that, that funding was never approved by us to do.
Well, it was in the budgets of these individual departments, and they paid for it within their own budgets.
But it was apparently moved from one part of their budget to another, and I thought that had to come through us first.
Yeah, that was my thinking as well.
So...
John, you had something?
From a legal standpoint, I think that Carl's comment is, is quite correct, that the, the facility oversight does fall under the executive and that, that certainly the budget and those expenditures, that's your purview. And if, if that wasn't done properly, then it ought to be done properly. But in terms of managing and making proposals, that, that's not to say that the council can of itself make a proposal for a building or a remodel, but it does more naturally fit under the executive office's authorities, both to manage personnel and facilities. Like if the executive were to create a, a working committee on that, that would, the idea of a committee to help inform that, I think is completely appropriate, but it probably would fit better as a, a committee from the executive branch rather than legislative.
Madam Chair, if I could add a couple of things.
Sure.
First, I just want to thank you for your interest and support in facilities. This is one of the, probably one of the bigger issues internally that I've heard about from departments since, since beginning to serve as county executive and especially with several changes that we've had this year with the, the new building out in Hiram, the new Children's Justice Center, the pending acquisition of the Armory. We've, we've got millions of dollars in ARPA money that we're trying to figure out how to use. So there have been a number of discussions and shifting of people and planning for future shifting of people. So I definitely think we should be having some discussions about, about it. And I also wanted to clarify the, the initial list or outline of expenditures we might have with ARPA funds. I did put a placeholder in there for some type of architectural or space planning studies. And we put $100,000 number in there. That was just a placeholder. Out of the $25 million total, we just threw that in there. We don't think it will cost anywhere near that, although we haven't gotten any quotes yet. But I, I do think it would be valuable for us to bring a professional, an architect or somebody like that to help us look at our space, look at staffing, look at staffing projections, look at all of our buildings that we can have, as well as the ones that we're planning to bring onboard soon. And help us to come up with, help us to come up with some plans for the future development of those properties and to let us know if in fact we do need more money. Because I, I, that's, that's the reason why I wanted that money to be spent, because we are looking at, two of the proposals in the ARPA list so far are for other buildings, other facilities. And I thought before we go and spend millions of dollars on a new facility, I'd really like to know for sure if we need it. Do we actually need that extra space? And by when would we need it? So I think there are a lot of questions to, to be answered and definitely some discussions that should be had. I would be happy to, to put together, if it's more appropriate to be under my office, I'd be happy to put that together and lead that and include you in the process of, of this. But I, I do, I do think we absolutely need to have these discussions, especially if we're going to spend potentially millions of dollars on new facilities.
Thank you, David.
I, I was gonna say, I agree with Dave over here that, you know, we weren't informed properly about the spending of those remodels. But I don't know if forming a committee is the answer to that. You know, maybe finding a way to get that information to us as it should be gotten to us, not, you know, forming a committee to do that. That's just my feeling on it.
Yeah. And as far as that goes, I'm not aware of any inappropriate uses of those funds. As far as I'm aware, and I can double check and look into this if you'd like me to, the funds that they, that those two particular offices used for remodeling were funds that were approved in their budget and as far as I know, they were used appropriately. But if, if you've heard otherwise or you feel otherwise, I'd be happy to look into that.
I think the issue that maybe some feel is whether they were approved under remodeling. But you guys maybe know more about that. Just, just to add on, I understand, John, what you're saying. I look at the council as the budget issue and the policy issue, and that's where I'm coming from, is budget and policy. That's the purview of the council. And as we start moving into thinking of spending millions of dollars of ARPA fund and building and having policies that go along with that, I really feel that council should play an integral role in that. That's, that's our job and make sure that we're in the know and wanted to make sure that the other elected officials were, were part of it and that it was a joint, an effort that involved everyone, you know? And everyone had their say because everybody's got an idea of what they would like their office to move forward and sizing and stuff like that. And before we, you know, talked to a professional, I thought it would be really good if we could talk together and figure out how things would go. And that's why I brought this up.
And it may depend on, I don't know that there's a black and white answer either and, and may depend on what part of the process. The more big picture it is, that's more policy and may show up in a resolution or ordinance or a county policy, the more it's looking at the minutia of what, what a building design ought to look like or the more you get into the operational part, that shifts more toward an executive type function. And ideally, the two branches would kind of work together and maybe have a joint committee, I think, or something like that.
Well, I mean, I kind of like the committee idea just because, and I'm not going to go on my rant about the ARPA money, except to say that it really concerns me every time to hear, we've got $25 million sitting here, we got to figure out how to spend it. And we got $25 million from an entity that makes drunken sailors on shore leave look fiscally responsible. I mean, the feds just gave us a big pile of money that we can now get in trouble with. And I'm sorry, I would bet a lot of money that if you have a pot of $25 million and you go to an architect and say, should we build a building? The answer's going to be not only yes, but hell yes. Because you've got $25 million bucks. So from a high level, not to manage anybody's business, but somebody needs to be looking at this going, what's the real responsible thing to do here?
Well, I don't disagree with that. I think that's the responsibility we need to take on and oversee. But I guess my concern is, anytime you start dealing with committees to make decisions like this, you're, you're using a committee to deal with some, some things that could be minutia, slows things down, creates excess bureaucracy and really, I've, I've used this term before, but a camel is a horse designed by a committee. I mean, committees just don't work well for some of these kinds of activities. And that, that's my concern.
What if we put a dollar limit on the committee's purview?
What if they're just advisory? I don't know that they should be making decisions on their own, but that they should be advisory to the council to let us know.
Well, I, I mean, any, any building project, any remodel, anything like that, we ought to be made aware of this, we know what's going on. And, and I think we can do that without having a, a committee to have to review everything that is put forward. I, I just think it fits much better under the executive office.
You know, one thing that we might do is, of course, I think executives should be involved, but each one of us has got assignments over each department. And maybe an easy way to put a, an overseer on this is to have, I'm supposed to be over the, the attorneys if there's going to be a remodel in the attorney's office, then the executive and myself ought to be the two people that are involved with their decision making.
I think that's a good point.
Same thing with everyone else. That way, we could easily form a committee without a major act and just make it that whoever's department that you're over, if they're doing a renovation or something like that, you automatically become involved with executives to oversee what they're doing. But I do think we need to have some oversight to keep us informed. And then that person's responsibility on the council is to make a monthly report or so to the council as to how that's happening and what's taking place. And then we don't have so much bureaucracy and committees and all that. I know what you're saying when it comes to trying to get something through a whole bunch of committees. Everybody's got an input. When you get all through, nobody knows what you've said and what direction to take. Just a lot of information's been tossed around. But that would be my suggestion, that we take our responsibilities with each department that we're over and involved with and you be the one that immediately is assigned to oversee a building project or something in that particular department.
That's a thought.
I just felt that we had some issues when all of a sudden we did have some of this renovations going on. And then a lot of these same departments were up here asking for more money. And you're going, you went and spent all this money over here and now you're just wanting all of it. Why didn't you form some sort of a, was there some sort of organization to this? And step by step, so that you were moving into this incrementally or whatever it may be. It was just kind of a, you know, I, I kind of like, yeah, I guess if they use their money that's in their budget, but then they come back and now we want more money in our budget because we used it over here. And you go, that didn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
They shouldn't have done that.
Yeah. So I guess that's a little bit of the oversight somehow that we've got to have.
A cohesive plan.
Because it comes down to the finances of it, too.
Yep.
And I mean, I know just from working with architects in the private sector and office planning and stuff, I know what my business or some of my friends' businesses get from an architect that says, here's what you should do. And you look at the plan on that and you're like, well, there's no way I'm paying that amount. And here's how I can get by, right? And it would be nice as a council rather than getting, well, here's what the architect said to do. And then we build an office that's the, and you want to have, I'm not talking about having tin shits for employee, county employees to work in, but you know, you also don't want to have the nicest buildings in town, always be government buildings with, you know, big offices and fancy renovations and things, when then you look at the, at the folks that are paying the bill and they're not getting that in their own operations.
Well, case in point, if you drive around the valley, all the big nice office buildings, the big nice, every building has always been funded by taxpayers. Private sector don't have the opportunity to make those big buildings as a general rule. So your point's very made, very well made.
Seems, if I may, that like, if there were a policy about buildings, for example, if there's going to be a remodel, does that funding come from that department's budget? Or would there be a county budget for remodels? Would, when, is, is there a color scheme or a design scheme that the county wants to follow? What are some basic general principles of facilities in the county? That ought to come from this body. And then underneath those policies, get some expertise to, to give some advice and do some workshops to, so there's communication about the ideas that are coming up. Would they meet your approval budget-wise and adjustments could be made?
We already have a committee that formulates those ordinances and policies right now. And maybe that does need to come through them, which would be the controlling factor that everyone else has to live under.
Yeah, I, I would...
That's a good idea.
I would like to see a, a policy like that. Because I know that question was asked of me when those remodels were happening. There were some people concerned about colors and textures and materials and, and how it was going to fit into the rest of the building. And people, some people appealed to me and said, you're in charge of facilities, you should stop this or tell them to follow some certain plan. And that was the question I asked. I said, what is our plan? Do we have a standard? Is, is there any kind of a rule or regulation or guidance or, or anything? And no one was able to find any, any type of guidance on what it should be or has to be this kind of carpet or has to be this kind of motif or style. I think something like that might be helpful if we were to develop. And, and we could, like council member Erickson mentioned, we could take that through the policy and ordinance committee, have them work on some kind of a policy that could give us guidance on, on how we should handle those. Because if we're going to do a, a new building, we should probably have that, that policy in place and make sure the building fits, if, if we care about those kinds of things, which it sounds like we do. I, I think we do. This building is a great example of how it can be done right. This, this building is beautiful. It's an incredible building in, in the entire state, even in the country. I would say this is, this is a masterpiece. And how it was done, I don't know exactly. I wasn't involved in, in the process. I've heard bits and pieces of how it was done, but I know there was a lot of private funding that came into this as well. But they did a great job. And maybe that's something we should research is what the process was for this building and how, how they came up with the design and what kind of experts they consulted with. I think we could learn a lot from that.
Okay. So it sounds like what I'm hearing is, take some of these issues to our policy and ordinance review committee, which we already have three council members on and several department heads and Kathleen included, who has a really good institutional knowledge of the things that have happened, so.
I think you summarized it well.
So we'll do that without objection. Okay. Let's move to item 11D, which is approval of the 2022 Cache County Council meeting schedule and county offices holiday schedule. Are there any adjustments to this schedule and is there a motion to approve this?
Looks good to me. So that, that's good.
So is that a motion to approve?
Yep. Barbara, Dave and I will get observed New Year's Day off and January, all the, all the holidays will get off, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the county council schedule and the county office holiday schedule. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Okay. Not quite to six o'clock yet. So let's go ahead and move to, well, other business is 12A, and we just have a reminder there about our U.R. conference this week, which should be pretty fun. And let's move to item 13, council member reports. Noel, I'll start with you.
I don't have anything.
Yielding my time to Barbara.
Well, that sounded really official.
Barbara has nothing to say.
Okay. You don't have anything, Barbara?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Carl?
No, other, other than just to report that Dave and I were in the Bay River Homeless today and Dave is now the new president.
That was one of the things I was going to mention in my report, but decided to skip in the interest of time. But Wayne Niederhauser, the, who was asked by the government... in the interest of time. But Wayne Niederhauser, the, who was asked by the governor to head homelessness services for the state, asked me if I would serve as the chair of our local homelessness council. So that, that was ratified today at their meeting. Thanks, Carl.
Great.
So thanks for doing that.
It's a good cause.
Okay. Gordy?
I heard the interview of our executive on the radio talking about the activity that we had, and it looks as though there's a possible date for doing it again next year. Very well, very well covered, Dave, and thank you for the things that you said, just representing the county. I'm also looking forward to being with all of you at the end of the week and being able to be trained and taught and seeing what's going on elsewhere. And I'm excited that it should be a fairly decent drive down with good weather.
Thanks, Gordy. Dave?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? Okay. I don't really have anything.
Can I add something?
Yes.
Sorry. I think as a council, we decided to hold off our holiday celebration until after the first of the year. Is that correct?
We got a public hearing coming up in about five minutes.
We've done that in the past, but we, we don't have to. Do we still want to do that?
Everybody wants to do.
Do you guys want to have our Christmas, council Christmas party at Christmas or after Christmas?
I say, I say after.
I do, too. I think we enjoy it after.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, for remembering about that.
By then, Barbara, you won't be in charge, so.
I'll still go on.
Depends on what we do.
Madam Chair, can you set the public hearings? I know you have one public hearing.
I don't know. Can we do that, John? Even if it says six o'clock, that we go to item number nine?
There's nobody that needs to be here to comment on you setting.
On setting the public hearing, so we're good. Okay. Thank you for that suggestion. So we'll move to item number nine. Yes.
I moved to set the public hearing for resolution 2125, for the dates specified, November 23rd.
Okay.
21, 6:00 p.m. for 2022 county budget, and then amending the 2021 county budget.
Okay, thank you.
20, 21-27.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to set the public hearings as described by David Erickson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Madam Chair, I think you're okay to begin your public hearing as long as you're still going at six, so that anybody that's at six would still have an option.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that, John. So we'll go ahead and open our public hearing on adopting the 2022 Cache County budget. And as we do that, I, if you'll notice on your iPads, I had our assessor Kathleen Howell write us an explanation. Some of you may have been receiving emails, I know I have, or contact from citizens about how their taxes are increasing, even though we are not increasing taxes. And so I wanted to just take a second and explain. It's kind of long, so I won't read it. Janine, do we have this, Kathleen's letter in the public packet as well?
I will add it.
Okay, thank you, because I think it could be helpful. And if we could add it to our website as well, even on the council page, because it is confusing. And so what is, what has happened is the tax burden has actually shifted. So as the council knows, but I'll explain for anybody here for the hearing and those online, is every year we have a certified tax rate given to us by the state. A certified tax rate allows us to keep the same amount of revenue, plus new growth, but the same amount of revenue as we got last year. And if we decide to go past that certified tax rate, increase it, then we have to have a public hearing. The issue with the certified tax rate is that it's based on revenue, and it's not based, so what, it's not based on a rate. So what happens is, is property values go up, the certified tax rate goes down to keep you getting the same amount of revenue. As property values go down, the certified tax rate goes up, so that you get the same amount of revenue. And that works great in theory, because you think, oh, then my taxes will stay the same. But the problem is, is that what happened this year is that the residential and apartment, well, they went up because their market values totally went crazy and went up. And at the same time, the commercial property came down. So as that happened, it shifted the tax burden to the residential and the apartments and that type. And it's actually going down for some commercial owners. And so it's really confusing, because we've told the public, no, we're not raising taxes. And yet they look at their bill, and they are paying more than they did last year. And it's just because the way that that pie is divided, if you think of that pie as, as the revenue that we get, and you start cutting the pieces out, the residential got a bigger piece of that pie that they have to pay this year. And so I just wanted to explain that, because it is, it is really confusing. And if you read the letter from Kathleen, I'm sure she does a much better job of explaining it, it's just a little longer. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to comment can come to the podium, and please state your name, and then take just a couple minutes to tell us your thoughts.
My name is Mark Seymour. I'm here on the proposed tax increase of another $46.91. I'm one of those that experienced a $100,000 value increase on my property, therefore causing my taxes to go up $500, which is one quarter of my pay increase for the year of 2021. I'm not sure if what will happen in 2022, if I'll get another $100,000 tax increase to go $500. But I'm against the $46 increase, because I'd rather have it go up 500 bucks than 550 bucks, or $546. I'm not sure exactly. I know it says the general fund, which is 14 or 15% of the, the tax, property tax value on that. And then I understand that .87 of it goes to the health fund, in which this document said that it's going to. But I live on a street where there are nine residents, seven of the nine are empty nesters, and all our values went up. So nine times 500 is 4,500 bucks. Got extra to put towards that 10%, or that 15%, and that .87. So I'm against that. And in speaking with my neighbors, they, who aren't here, obviously, they were telling me they would happily be here, but obviously aren't.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I, I did fail to mention two things that are important. And the first is, we sent a notice out because we were contemplating raising taxes, and we decided not to. The other issue that I forgot to mention that's important is the market value. By state law, the assessor has to be between 95 and 105% of market value, meaning she can't just go and raise your property value to whatever she feels like. It has to be within market value. And so there are those things that we are bound by. And then the market has been crazy this year. We hear you. So just wanted to, to make that clear. Thank you for coming.
Clarify then. Even though the notice was sent out, we are not raising taxes.
Can you tell your neighbors you talked us out of it?
Yep.
Thank you.
But, you know, and to that point, too, just to be really clear, we're not raising the tax rate, which is what this body has control over.
Yep.
But the market values of property are going up. And as a result, the actual dollar amount that you write your check for year over year could go up, and probably will go up. It's going to go up, in my case, because, same thing, because my property value applied to the tax rate. I mean, I'll write a bigger check for property taxes this year than I did last year, but it is based on the increase in the value of my property, not an increase in the tax rate. The tax rate itself actually floated down. But, because it's a, it's a tax rate applied to a property value that gives you the amount that you write the check for.
But if we hold to the certified rate, the dollars you spend are the same as what you spent before. The percent against that higher market value went down.
Correct. Yes, and that's what.
So we're not paying any more in actual dollars.
You are, because the.
We are, we are because of the shift.
The value shifted. The commercial properties went down, the residential went up. So now the residential are paying more of that big pie, the amount of pie that the certified tax rate would give us. That same amount of revenue is being paid differently than it was last year.
So, so that's where, you know, as you go home and you look and you say, wait, they said they didn't raise taxes. But a lot of people are writing a check for more property tax this year than they did last year. The rate that we have control over actually went, floated down. But it was applied to a property value that went up, that we don't really have control over, and the assessor has to use a formula that's mandated by the state.
So I know that the extra $49 and $46 you're wanting, that property tax, 15% of it goes towards your general fund. So therefore, of that $500 more that I'm paying, 15% of that goes into the general fund, and .87 of it goes into the health, which was considered. So with the amount of construction going on, single residential and multi-gewning units, you had mentioned earlier that apartment property taxes and residential property taxes have gone up. That is, you've got a huge inflow coming in that adds to that 15%, .87% that you were looking for in this proposed tax increase. So it's kind of, okay, where are the services that are going to be, that are new, that are being offered in this proposed tax increase?
That's a great question.
I mean, I know you're talking about the fire station earlier, and you've got a grant for 25 million, as I overheard. Is that correct or incorrect?
It's, it's the.
ARPA funds.
It's federal funds.
Okay.
Federal COVID funds.
And then there was something about Echols donating something towards that. And I know you've done some projects around where Echols has donated funds towards that. So I was kind of like, okay, we, we don't have any schools. You already did, went through and bonded three new high schools, that being Green Canyon, Rich Line. Three? Two?
Those are two.
Sorry. But you had elementary school, Ellis, which you've got down here, and then a couple, basically renovation, knocked down Willdoughs, Hillcrest schools. And then you did, I'm sorry, you did do three, the continuing, the Cache Valley High School over there next to Rich Line, was a newer one. So that's, I was counting three. So I can say, yeah, those have been done or are completing this year. So, and I don't see anything on the books for new schools or new fire stations, aside from the existing one being moved, or it's still in discussion.
Those are great questions, and I'm so glad you asked them, because all of this can be really confusing. So Cache County, even though Cache County School District, or Cache School District, has such a similar name, totally not them. They raise taxes, they do their own taxing, they do their own, their own stuff in their own building. We have nothing to do with them. So when the bond happened, that was done by the school board, had nothing to do with us. But that's so confusing, because even their logo looks like us. And so it's easy to get confused.
I like going to their meetings and yelling about taxes. I do.
He's been there, and, and, yeah, I told him off. So anyway, we're totally separate entities. The other thing that is, that is really hard to grasp, and it took me as a council member while to understand this, is with the certified tax rate that we get, we get the same amount of revenue. We get the same size pie that we got last year. So we weren't, we're not getting any new services, because we're not raising any taxes. We're getting that same piece of the pie. But just think of that pie being divided into different slices. Last year, the slices were different. This year, the slice for residential and apartments, which are residential, but that's a bigger slice, because it shifted, because those property values went up. And the commercial went down. So the commercial people are paying less part of this pie this year, and the residential are paying a bigger part of this pie. So even though we're not raising taxes, your taxes did go up because of that situation. I'm hoping that that makes sense. It's, it took me a while to understand and grasp, but you're probably smarter than me, so you'll probably catch on faster.
Like you're saying, when people see that bill, they see the whole bill.
Yeah.
Schools, Cache County, you know, they see that as one, $1, when in reality, 63% of that is schools, I believe right around 63%. And the 37% is actually county for roads and services. And that's what's, that's what's kind of tough, is that we have no control over when the school does their bonding. I don't know if you noticed, but they like to do their bonding usually right at the, right about June, when everyone's on vacation. And so, you know, you see that happen, and so you don't get a whole lot of participation on a lot of those bonding votes, is because they're, to me, they're always done at the wrong time. If they were done, I think, in the fall, during a regular election time, things like that, I think there'd be a lot of people, be very local. So.
You know, it might be a good solution to this, to help clarify some of the confusion. It'd be if we had our state legislature change it, and make every taxing entity send their own notice. They make us be the bad guy, and we have to send the notice that the school district, that the city, that the special districts are raising their taxes. And that's confusing to people. I, I've been confused about it in the past, before I figured out how this worked. You get a notice from the county, and it says your taxes are going up, but it might just be your city, or it might just be your school district, or it might be some other special district. I wonder if our legislature would consider doing that, make everybody send their own. I, I think especially the school district, because they're, that's, that's most of the taxes you're paying is from your school district.
It would be interesting, because a lot of the questions and calls and emails I get are about that property tax notice and how it went out.
Mm-hmm.
Or conditional use permits. This letter from Kathleen Howell helped me. I'd almost like to say, let's send it out in our tax notices and say, here's an explanation.
It was very well done. It very, it was a very good descriptive letter.
Because it would, I mean, because I had an immense discussion with one constituent, and he's like, I understand the tax situation. I'm like, well, good, because explain it to me. And so we go back and back, and yet I read this, and I'm like, okay, this makes broader sense.
Well, I guess I'm in the unique situation, because my taxes went down this year.
Well, that's amazing.
I know.
How'd you do that?
You better not say that publicly out loud.
Might have been a mistake.
But I do have one question, just to clarify. So you said your pie remained the same.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So $100, of that $100, you get 53, or the school district gets 53. So it's 53.87, eight-four, okay? So they get 53 of it. The Cache General Fund gets $14 of that hundred, because it's 14%. Okay? So if I increase to where I pay $1,000, that means you get $140, even though your pie stays the same. It's the same, it's the same.
Yeah, but we're getting less from the, the commercial sector, then.
We're getting less from the commercial sector, so it's balancing out. So while you're paying more, the commercial sector's paying less, and then it balances out to the same pie.
Okay. I'm just wondering where that, where that extra money goes. But that's a different question.
It's not extra, because it's making up for what the commercial sector didn't pay, because theirs went down from last year, because their property value went down. So they're paying less, and you're making up the difference, paying more.
That's where we're proposing to go right now, is what we're, we're working through as we speak, for the 2022 budget. That's where we're proposing those monies to go. And so.
If you'd like, I can meet with you afterward and go through your specific tax bill and explain each line for you.
I just, it just kind of, if it, you know what I mean? If it goes up from 100 to so much, and you're getting 14%, which was $14, it seems to me, your pie doesn't change. But the amount, amount of money coming in increases.
No, the pie's still $100.
Yeah, we're still getting $14.
Yeah.
$14, period.
But instead of residential paying five of it, they're paying seven, and commercial is paying less, you know? That's, that's what's so, that's what's so hard to understand sometimes.
The amount of money coming in remained the same.
Yeah. The revenue remains the same.
Properties paying different amounts.
But now I know there's more commercial properties being built in the area. Costco's coming in, you've got the L&amp;W, you've got the Blue Springs, you've got several tilt-ups going around, the airport and stuff like that. The airport and stuff like that, Fosse Pat, other buildings, you have Dutch Brothers going up. So I imagine commercial side is still booming as far as that revenue coming in.
And you'll, you'll.
Go ahead.
You'll probably see that shift next year too, and that's, that's what makes this process so challenging is, is everything is a, is a moving, there's no fixed factor anywhere. So they're all moving at the same time, and we're having to do it prospectively, right? Looking forward at certain things. So, you know, residential, you saw the big run-up in residential values last year, and all the projects you're talking about are, are on the drawing board. They're coming, but they haven't been assessed yet. So as soon as Costco goes up, it'll get assessed, that value commercially will increase. We'll apply that factor there. And then, and then that tax burden might shift back toward commercial in the coming year rather than being shifted toward residential in this particular year. And that's something that we can't get in and microscopically control.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and asking those questions. Okay, let's see. We now need to move to eleven A. Am I right, Barbara? Because I've written so much on my agenda.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure. So eleven A, Resolution 2021-25, a resolution adopting the 2022 Cache County budget. We still have a public hearing set for that for next week because, as I described, there was a mix-up in sending the notice. But I've got Cameron here to talk about and answer any questions that we have on the tentative changes that he sent out. So this resolution includes those changes, but I wanted to make sure that the council approved those changes since we approved a tentative budget and that we were all on the same page, because I, I know sometimes there's been some confusion. So Cameron, if you can answer those questions and maybe quick, go through what some of those are.
Those tentative changes, was that his email on the first?
Jeanine, were you able to put that on the server?
I just barely saw your thing.
Oh, okay.
I can, I can put it up. I'm gonna make it.
If you could, let's see, if I can send it all to you again real fast.
Let's do that different.
Let's see, where is it? Would you like me to send that to you, council, so you can follow along?
Yeah.
I hope that's big enough where you guys can see that, and that'll be coming up on your iPads real soon. So as Jeanine has kind of said, and as you'll recall, it was in the last meeting in August that a tentative budget for 2022 had been presented and the council adopted at that time. And so that is still the tentative budget except for these budget amendments. The resolution includes these amendments, but as we were talking, we do want to go over them again. We've been over them in a budget workshop, but we want to go over them again and make sure everyone has that chance to have questions answered. And if there's anything that you would like to see not included in the amendments, then we have the opportunity to amend that and move those out at this point. So you got a question? Are we ready to go?
Yeah, I got a question, but keep going, you're fine.
I was just gonna start walking through them one by one, so if that's okay with everybody, I'll go ahead. Okay, so on this first one, the original request included a new employee at the Senior Center. And as, and you'll see another amendment related to the Senior Center at the end. But the request wanted to use fund balance in the Senior Center fund to, to fund that for that current year. When we put it all together and started analyzing it, we said the Senior Center doesn't have available fund balance to use for any purpose, including payroll. And so this has been removed out. And so what you can see in the Senior Center fund, there's three different cost centers, nutrition, the Senior Center itself, and then the access grants. That position was going to be allocated across each of those divisions, and so you can see it coming out of each of those divisions. And then this looks like we're making an addition to the use of fund balance, but because it is a revenue account, this, this positive amount is actually pulling that out of the budget. So we're removing fifty-seven thousand two hundred from using, or use of fund balance, and then we're removing the related expenses. So there isn't that additional position at this point then being recommended or being requested into the budget. The second one is, has to do with our new grant writer and manager position. When we originally did the budget, we knew we were advertising, but we hadn't acquired an employee at that point, and so there was not the request or an estimate in there, knowing that we would come with an amendment once that position had been filled. So that's, that's what the second amendment does, is add salary, payroll, taxes, and benefits, a little bit of travel and education and training expenses. This third one relating to our ambulance services, as you recall, the partnership between Logan City and Cache County that created the Cache County Emergency Medical System, or SIMS Authority, dissolved as of the beginning of this year. Been operating through our fire and EMS budget in the current year. And for next year, ambulance, it will be separate department from the fire department. We'll have two separate cost centers there. This is, this is separating out revenue estimates that we had previously so that we can more detailed record the transactions that happened there. So as you probably can imagine, with any medical expense, you have your regular bill, your insurance forces you to write a little bit off of that, and there's a little bit of collections or some of those that are remaining will go to collections. These entries here are simply recognizing all of those common factors in collecting a medical bill. So on the first line, our gross receipts from ambulance fees are being compared to what we had listed before as our net receipts. So that's going to increase by five hundred fifty-eight thousand, although you'll see right here on payment adjustments, we'll turn around and take four hundred seventy-five thousand of it back right away. And again, with another forty-two thousand on bad debt write-offs. We're simply wanting to have a bucket for each one of those transactions rather than mash them all into one account. In the end, the, the estimate increases our net revenue by twenty thousand five hundred, and so there's that much less being used from the fund balance to. We simply, there never was funds balance being used for that before, but because we have more revenue and our expenses are already set, we're just reducing the amount of fund balance then that we have appropriated because it's not needed. Related to ambulance collections as well, just as kind of a reclassifying here, we have a third-party collection agency that bills and collects those on our behalf. Originally budgeted in the account three-ten, and the ambulance department, we're moving that to account five-twenty. It's more of a housekeeping item, really. On the fire side of things, you may recall from our regular budget, there's allocations that go out to different departments throughout the county. And for the 2022 year, the amounts going to each of those departments is being adjusted here. And I actually don't, got updated figures on that?
Updated population numbers.
Okay. So from when the estimate was originally made, we have our updated population numbers, and we're adjusting those allocations accordingly. In economic development, you recall Sean Millen has worked quite a bit on securing some grants here. And his department for next year, we secured a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that required a forty percent match. And so these number six and number seven are making the adjustments related to that. Initially, that had been, again, balanced with current revenues, but within fixed, fixed expenses. When we make this adjustment, we simply reduce the amount of fund balance that was appropriated into the budget. So as we get that two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, you can see here we're reducing contribution of fund balance by that fifty thousand, and then we have a fifty thousand going into our special grant expense. And then eighty thousand dollars here, reducing, well, what, actually, this is reducing what would have been contributed to the fund balance because this is the county's match for that two-hundred thousand. So forty percent of the two-hundred is the eighty thousand. But both of those, he's got specific projects tied to, one for fifty, one for eighty, and so we had it in separate transactions. Now, number eight was probably the longest one, and if you're questioning that, I'll just scroll through that and let you see that for a second. When we first adopted, oh, it's still going. When we first adopted the budget, of course, this was before the council had approved the three percent COLA increase. And that increase, as you know, impacts this current year, 2021, but then we also have to amend that into the budget for next year. And so it's also, as we read through this, appropriates funds for the market adjustment and for the merit increase and for the adjustment to the step and grade system used by the sheriff's office. And so this ties back to a separate worksheet that I'll walk through with you here, where it does those, those three or four things. This is a forecast that we took about the end of September, maybe middle of, end of September, when we knew at that point we were looking at implementing the three percent COLA, as well as we had gotten information back from our insurance brokers that our medical insurance premiums would not change. Previously, we had estimated increase, which of course is common to have an increase in medical insurance premiums. And so what this worksheet does then is it'll go department by department, fund by fund, and, and measure those differences. And so if we look at the general fund in total, right here, you can see the net difference for the general fund actually was a savings of thirty thousand nine hundred dollars to the budget. There was three percent increase in wages and related payroll taxes, benefits, but the reduction in the health insurance more than offset that in the general fund is what that's saying. So this, this helped me to calculate that department by department, and I addressed those two issues in that fashion because the COLA had been assigned to each employee and therefore was determinable by department. And so on the very last page then, as I took that, so here's three percent COLA and the reduced medical insurance, and I summed that up by category of full-time, part-time, and seasonal employee, as well as payroll taxes and benefits. So the, for that issue, a proposed increase was actually a decrease of thirty thousand nine hundred. The reason I wanted to be able to separate them out this way, though, is really for those other three issues that we talked about. And the easiest one to probably show that one is I'll jump over here to the public safety step and grade system. These numbers then tie out to what was presented back in September as the compensation committee had made a recommendation, it was presented by Amy, our HR director. So I have rounded them up to the nearest hundred because I like to budget in hundreds instead of in pennies. But, so for the estimate that was presented to, to the council or in the compensation committee and to the council for that stepping grade increase was nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars in wages. Now that I have them separated out as full-time, part-time, or seasonal employees, which in this case all of it would be full-time, I can take an average of what their retirement system benefit would be. I can calculate payroll tax, I can calculate workers' compensation, life insurance premium and so forth that are all based on what that wage is. And so in this case, calculating out that we need an additional three hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred that would be associated to that increase in wages, and so the total there is a million three sixteen eight hundred.
COLA on the COLA.
For, for, no, this is, this hasn't happened yet. This is for the step and grade that's proposed in the sheriff's office for 2022. The COLA is over here, and it's actually not isolated because those two changes had already happened, and so I kind of smashed those together. I apologize, I guess, if you'd wanted to see those separated out. I mainly was measuring and tying that out so that I knew that these would also tie out to the same thing that we had done for the COLA by full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees. These are harder to see, you can't, in a PDF, I can't circle those and add those up. But if I went through then, the, the amounts that are appropriated here for market adjustment and the amounts that are appropriated in this column for the merit increases, they tie out to what was presented before, and so I have little notes down here that talk about that. And what I show is that we had, that the sheriff's office would be, move that starting wage to twenty-two fifty an hour for a deputy one. That's what's represented there, and that was communicated, that that, a little typo here, that should say three hundred instead of just an even thousand, but nine thirty-nine on that one. But for the cost for public employee and firefighter on the market adjustment, we had the seven hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred, and we had the two hundred forty thousand dollars for the merit increase. And so that, if you were, if I could add these up for you, that's what's represented in these two columns. Public employee and firefighter in, in both of these two columns, but one's the market adjustment and one's the merit increase. These now then show the associated payroll tax and benefits with those wage increases that were recommended from the committee. And that is what ties back to this entry here on the payroll. It's accounting for the COLA that we needed to add in, it removes the medical insurance, it adds in the market adjustment, and it adds in the merit increase. However, only the COLA is going department by department. There's one, let's see, right here. You'll notice in each fund, we created an account, this one's for the general fund, and it will be the biggest by far, create an account called Compensation Reserve. And so we took all of, of these amounts here that are for market and merit and public safety adjustments and said, those have, whoops, those haven't been yet allocated out by department. We will do that in a budget amendment in our first one next year. And the reason they didn't want to do it right now is we end up having to change so much of it anyway. In the sheriff's office, for example, you know, he has three divisions of criminal division, a support services division, and his corrections division. And if I say, okay, here's all the employees in that division, and so here's the amount of market adjustment that needs to go there, between now and when we start the budget, he'll change it three times, and it won't be the same amount anymore, and we have to adjust it and amend it in the budget anyway. We also don't know what the merit increase is going to be. And so what we've done is take the associated amounts with those two issues and put them in one pot so that when we get to that point and those raises are allocated out, then we come back here and say, okay, here's where we need to take that pot and redistribute that to the departments.
That was my question, was what that Compensation Reserve was, it was a large number.
Yeah. We've done that before. It's been a long time, though. This is an idea I borrowed from probably about fifteen years ago.
So the council will still have to come back and.
Yeah, so that, that, that amount of money sits there until council says this is, we agree, this is where it should be redistributed to. It will be a budget amendment, just like if we take.
We don't have specific homes for that money yet.
Right, right. The three percent we do, that's assigned, that's allocated out. Market adjustments probably are known position by position, but merit increases also are not known. That will change.
So according to HR, this is basically saying that this is where we are short? We're short this much money to get everybody up to market that should be up to market?
This includes both market and merit and payroll tax and benefit. That's the whole pot.
That's, okay.
Yeah, and that's in the general fund. So you'll notice if we, we go down to fund, now you see we're in Tax Administration Fund. Look for that same header again, Compensation Reserve. We have to account for and pay for employees in each separate fund that they exist in, but you'll see in the other funds, they're much, much smaller than what the general fund is.
Yes, how I look at this is that it's money that's sitting there, and that person that we're basing this increase to get them up to market, the merit, all that, still may not have it. Or.
Potentially, it has to be authorized still, is that what you mean?
No, I'm saying that will, in other words, if we authorize that money, will some get market adjustment, others not?
market adjustment, others not?
Depends on where they're at in their pay range and if they're where they need to be within that market.
And you looked at those individually?
Yes. I have a spreadsheet I can show.
To add up?
We're welcome to come.
No, but to add up, they all add up together to get that amount. That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So that every, right now, every dollar of that compensation reserve does have a home.
What about merit, though? I thought you said that wasn't decided yet? Am I misunderstanding?
So, let me jump back, let me jump back to this one. In fact, maybe this will help a little bit. I borrowed a couple of slides from that presentation. So this is back on September 14th, and I took the two slides that I tied to. And I, because David was, or Dave was gone, I thought, this would be a good idea. So this is where I was, there's a whole lot of more presentation, and I guess I actually could open that too if you want, but this slide was shown to show what those estimates were, that the public employees and fire would cost us the 729,475. So I rounded that to 729,500, and that this warrant deputies are 939,266. Again, I rounded that 939,300. But this is what was presented, and it was highlighted that this is the wage budget. I had to come back, so if you look at that 939, let me come back to this spreadsheet here. This is my 939 right here, but then I have calculated the payroll tax and benefits associated to that 939,000. That all has a home because that's a calculation of, for every deputy that we have right now, which will change because some go and then new ones come and so forth. But they have that stepping grade system that says, if you've been here this many years and you're active and have a good evaluation, this is the amount that you'll be paid based on your years of service. Now that we're shifting that from, what is it at right now, 1937?
With the COLA, it went to 1995.
Oh, so, yeah. That'll be adjusted up to 2250, but that then, that's the starting one, and that has that ripple effect all the way through depending on years of service. So that gets calculated out and is costing 939,300 in wages, and then I've calculated the associated benefits. Again, if I could add all of these up, what you would see then, I can't do that on a PDF, but what you would see is that we're looking at this 729,000 for the public employees and for the fire. Now, this is the market adjustment right here. Those are more well-known. Every position, every employee says, how many years of service do you have? What's your job value? What is the market for that job value? And so where in that range ought you to be based on your years of service and your evaluations that have happened from year to year. So that dollar really adds right up and is fairly well-known where those dollars should go. The next piece is the merit, so that, when you add those to the 907, that's your 1.7 million here. The next piece here was a merit increase, and that was estimated at 240,000. Again, this is what, I don't know if I can make that look a little bit bigger. There we go, 240,000. So when I come back to this spreadsheet here on merit increase, I've done the same thing. If you could go through and just add up the wages, I've hit the 240,000, but then I've also gone through and estimated what those associated payroll taxes and benefits would be to that 240,000. So then the notes that I'm making down here are highlighting that, that we have the 939,000 with the 729,5 and with the 240, and I'm noting that the total estimated cost on payroll tax and benefits then is 616,200. And this then shows where that's allocated by fund, and this amendment then is picking those up by fund. So that they're placed there until that vote happens and says, we are doing this, in fact, for certain, this is how the allocation works out. Even if I allocated out the market increase, there's, again, the potential that people have moved what division they're in in the sheriff's office, people quit, find a different job, somebody else comes in, and things change. And so for years, I've tried to be really right accurate with that and found that I've got to reshuffle everything anyway. So this year, we thought, you know what? We'll tie exactly out to what's been presented, we'll make that estimate on payroll tax and benefit, and then we'll allocate it at the beginning of the year when we know those wages have been assigned out. So that's why it's sitting in a compensation reserve right now. But that allocation will come back in the budget amendment and say, here's where it's going. You still have a question? You look like you still have a question.
But I just trying to understand that you're, on the merit, you say that's 1.5% of all of the wages, right? You've taken, and that's...
Oh, on the merit increase?
Okay, and then you, then you say, well, if we allocate all of that, then this is going, then we're going to need more because of their taxes and everything.
Yes, yes, so...
So it's really not 1.5% for the merit. It's 1.5% plus.
Wages, and that's what...
It could be 2%.
Well, to the total budget, yeah.
Everything else goes with the 1.5. See, to me, I look at it and go, 1.5 should include all of that.
Well, so I think that's the emphasis here on these slides, is that this is the wage budget. That's, it says it in both places, that here's these increases, total increase to wage, and I guess that's a distinction, maybe unintentionally miscommunicating. That literally means the wages, not the payroll taxes and the benefits. So this is the increase to the wages. That's the way it was being presented. And so that's why, and that's why it was discussed in compensation committee meetings. So when I get a hold of the data, then I say, okay, they're agreeing on this for wages, but I am going to have to add taxes in if that's the agreement for wages.
Are you, are you on the compensation committee?
No, I'm not.
So when they come up with these analysis that we want a 1.5%, they don't really know how much more above that we're really going to need, but you could probably provide them if you were on that committee?
Yeah, I mean...
Amy provides that. She says, this is what, this is what it will cost, and then the benefits and that will be above and beyond that.
Right, right. So the question is, it was, there was no, there was no, I mean, I thought it's clear that that was the increases to the wages, but I don't, the committees kind of said, here's our recommendation, and that's what's going to council, and then that's when I'm getting the information and saying, okay, well, if the recommendation is to wages, now I've got to add benefits. I don't know what the discussion was before then.
The one thing the council needs to always remember, and that is whenever they're going to raise the wages to the county employees, if the wages are going to increase by $10,000, we're just using 10 as the number, you've got to also remember that it'll be another $4,500 in addition to that.
Well, it's probably more than that these days.
It might be at least half, again, as much as what you're talking about.
Yeah. With medical insurance is where it's at now, we're seeing a starting deputy before all these changes may add like 65% of their wage for their benefits if they have a family insurance. And so that's another thing that changes a big, too. Even if somebody does have family insurance this year, they may not next year for various reasons. Or if they didn't this year, next year they might. And so I was finding that those were changing all the time, even though we try to be very exact, it's only a snapshot. So at any point in time, you say, this is what it is, but next year, when we need it, it's already changed. And so I was opting for that compensation reserve account at this point.
I'm very much in favor of the employees, okay? But to fund, to fund, I would rather fund the employees, but then there's a lot of requests that I've been seeing from the different departments that we just are fairly just jumping up 10, 15, 30, 50,000, you know, just all of a sudden we want an increase. I'm saying, okay, you do without that, employees can have their, you know, that's how I look at it. I just think that we're kind of, right now, we're seeing a jump in both dramatically. And I'm saying, well, if we're going to have such a pretty good, you know, a strong package to keep employees, which is our number one asset, then I say, okay, departments, then you cut back over here on your requests. That's how I've, that's how I've been looking at it myself, so.
Can I just say, okay?
When these estimates are made, also, we don't know what the medical benefits are at that point, and so that's why we're calculating just on the wages side of it, not necessarily adding in all of the benefits, because it does take until about the end of September before we get our renewals back. So that's one of the reasons, because as we're talking as a compensation committee, we begin May, June, July, having those conversations. So that would be one of those reasons.
Most of the time, the real thumb, we're in the compensation committee, we're planning on a 6% medical increase.
Right.
And when it come in zero this year, it was like hallelujah, first time ever. And I was on the, I've been on the county council when we've had a 16% medical increase.
Yeah, I was going to say, I remember once being excited that it was only 6%. Zero is, I've never heard of that.
Our employees have done very, very, very good to keep their medical expenses as low as possible, and we've had some programs to encourage it. But they have done well, and as a result, we haven't utilized the medical expenditures that we've seen in other years. This year, we did so well that there was no need to raise it. Now, next year might be all different. We're already seeing a huge, you know, a huge hospital situation, and it'll have a huge effect on what's going to happen next year.
So that is why there's some in every department, but then also a large amount in a compensation reserve. This is tied to the COLA and the medical insurance. The compensation reserve is tied to the market adjustment, the merit increase with associated payroll tax and benefit. In every fund, so here we go. Okay. Any other questions on that before we move to number nine? Number nine is a pretty simple, we've got a transfer recorded in the Children's Justice Center Fund receiving money from the general fund for a match towards a grant. The general fund didn't have the associated transfer out, so that's, all this is doing is recording that transfer out. Number 10 is because I like to round every account line to the nearest $100, and somehow a 50 got in there, so I'm rounding it up to 100.
It comes out of your pocket.
Well, if we don't use it, then it goes back in. It's all for show. The real underlying expense didn't change. Number 11 is about our sales tax revenue estimates. And so again, when we first compiled that budget back in August, the data I have in August is actually for May or June, depending on when in August we have that. I believe it was actually May, I didn't have June data yet. So then, as we get later in the year, we take the additional months that we know, and we just do an update. And we've got mostly increases, but there was a decrease, if you'll notice, here in the road tax. That trended downward by 291,000, and so that's been removed out of the budget. You'll note, I didn't have to make any cuts to proposed expenditures, it was simply there was a contribution in fund balance that I could reduce. But other places where we see municipal services, where we have our local sales tax, that amount going up by 11,000, but our transportation tax was trending up for 234,000, and so on with wraps tax and restaurant tax and our transient room tax.
Money back to us, because we less fuel box.
Number 12 is then looking at the big picture again, saying, how much of our departments that allocate over to the tax administration fund, have they had changes, what changes need to be made? So we take a measure again, you can see in each one of those account, the percent of the total budget that should be allocating over. We remeasured that, and then these adjustments are coming from that. But they would all be related to other adjustments that we've talked about. This case, primarily the payroll adjustment. And then our last one, back to our senior center again, even with taking out that proposed additional employee, you'll recall that when we were here at the workshop last time, I said they were facing a shortfall or a deficit of 20,100 and the instruction, or 21,000. The instruction then was to increase the transfer from the general fund, and so that's what this entry does. One entry that's not on here, back to our payroll, as if it weren't big enough, is there is not an amendment or a contemplation of an increase for elected officials. I had forgotten, that's an entirely separate issue until I was reviewing your slides today. So I don't know, are, is it expected then to take those as proposed by the compensation committee for elected officials? Or it seems like there was some dialogue still ongoing, and maybe that's why it was left off weeks ago. But if, I assume there's going to be an increase for elected officials, I need then specific instruction on what that increase should look like, and then that will be in another amendment.
Did we have a written proposal on that?
So the proposal from...
Yeah, I thought we did, too.
Is this one right here?
It was passed.
So is that, is that what...
That was in our tentative budget already, although...
It was passed.
We have to pass it as an ordinance.
The COLA was passed, I think, is what Cameron's referring to, right?
Yes.
So the increase to the wage budget, as you can see up there, would be 11%. Basically, what the, what that's proposing, as the compensation committee talked about this, is it would be an additional 7% to each elected official, including council members that's recommended. So for a total of a 10% increase with the COLA.
Is the market adjustment in there for time served and all that?
We don't necessarily do that for elected officials. So, well, we should, if you want to, we can totally...
You've got to prove yourself in there before you get the dollar.
Right, right. What was compared was against other counties, the second and third counties, so. You are the ones that control the elected officials' pay, so if that's something that you'd like me to look at, I can certainly put that together and bring it back to you.
Get a percentage for how every year you have served, is that what, is that what you're saying?
You should get the biggest raise.
Yeah, I get, you know, I should.
You better have that much more wisdom.
Don't you notice I'm always saying, now, this is what happened years ago, so that's what's in this. Yeah, and then I always in the paper, and so then you guys... I thought, you know, when we did this, I thought we had actually, as a council decided that we were going to have, we were going to have and do that, so.
Okay, I apologize.
Be by ordinance or the resolution.
By then, you'd go home.
Oh, is that what it was?
That was a long view.
Add some of those. But, okay, so this I will also add in, were there any issues there that you don't want to see in the budget resolution? Right now, the resolution includes all of those amendments.
No, I...
Is there any objection to any of these?
Okay, so I will review that and make sure the elected officials also are included. And I don't have anything further unless you have other questions.
And to kind of go along with what Councilman Erickson said about, if we're going to raise the wages on all those employees and that, and take those departments, you know, to a new high, maybe we should review what else is in their budget to maybe soften that, elevate a little bit. But that doesn't happen today, that happens back at the first of the budget when it first comes out.
Yeah.
Without a tax increase, so.
Yeah.
Oh, John?
I just had a math question as I listened to the explanation there, that the 11% was 3% for the COLA and 7%, and 3 and 7 equal 10, so I was wondering...
That's very, very...
Especially for an attorney to catch math.
Right? I thought, I thought I would ask you that question.
Oh, he deals in hundreds.
He deals in hundreds.
Actually, these aren't my numbers. But I thought I would ask you.
I was curious after hearing the explanation.
Rounding.
Round.
Rounding. Is there any other questions?
So I tied out, by the way, just to the dollar amounts. I didn't use the percentages. So if the dollar amount, for example, right here says the merit increase is going to be 240,000, then I matched the 240,000 into the budget. I didn't try to take a percentage and then say, Amy, we rounded different. I just took the dollar amount that was presented. So I will do the same here as well. So that's all I have, but if there are any other questions on the 2022 budget, we can discuss those.
We do need to pass it next time at our next meeting, so if you have any changes we need to do next time, or any other questions, get with Cameron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron, appreciate that. Okay, so the last item that we have on our agenda is 14, it's executive session. ETO Code 5242051C, discussion of pending or reasonably imminent litigation. Have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. It's moved by Barbara, seconded by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will move to executive session in the council chairs.
As a finance guy, you'd be proud of me, I didn't have the first option.